There we go. Thank you.
All right. So we'll call the meeting to order at 4:30. Roll call.
Okay, Crawford?
Here.
In a sec.
Are you muted, Jill?
Doesn't look like she is.
Jill? She must.
No, it doesn't look like I'm muted.
All right, we hear you.
Now we hear you.
We hear you.
Now, all right. Becker?
Here.
Byrne?
Here.
Hines?
Here.
And Belida?
Here.
And Rizzuto, here.
All right, we have a quorum. I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes from our November 4 regular meeting.
So move.
Wait a second, I sent in a comment and I just wanted to make sure people thought about it before we approve it as it is with the minutes as written. You know, we have a requirement that we have to review every policy at least once every five years. And sometimes we review it and agree that we don't have to make any changes to it. It's good as stands. And so when we did that at the last meeting and recorded it in the minutes, it said that this policy doesn't need any changes. It's approved for five more years. So I wasn't sure that we should actually be approving it for a five-year span of time. I thought that we were just supposed to re-approve it. And when I went and looked at like how Central was doing that, they just say reviewed, approved with no changes, and they put a new date on it. So I wanted to toss that out there because now we're into the cycle of having to review all these as they come up and wanted to make sure we were doing them consistently.
Well, we should do it consistent. So if we want to change that, then we should make that change.
Okay, here, I'll share my screen. I'll put the minutes up on us. You can all see them. Which part was it at, Jill?
It was in under new business, I think. Material selection policy and procurement policy.
That came from the bottom.
Yeah.
Okay, my thing on that was, okay, my term expired in December and I was reappointed for a five-year term. Okay, so before five years, I could drop dead. Someone else is appointed.
I don't think that's what she's talking about.
No, no, but I'm just saying, when you say that it's, my thought was when it was approved for the next five years, meaning unless we have to make any other changes. But you want to use that wording every time, it's fine, but I think in the past, we didn't.
No, I didn't. I didn't want to use that wording. That was my point. My point was, I think we should just say it's reviewed, no changes were needed, and it's re-approved and have a new date on it. That way, it's, it's, you know, you can tell when it was approved. We know that it'll come up for re-approve, review automatically five years from that time, unless something comes up.
We have to also change the procurement policy because I did the same thing there.
I know, and I said.
I was consistent. I was consistent. I didn't realize we had to be, and I think in all the other, since I've been secretary, and this is my last time, so I don't really care. Since I didn't follow what the Central Library did, I just did it the way that I thought that was correct. So if you want to be consistent, you would have to change all of them?
Bridgette, the, you know, the fact that we have to have the current policies posted on the website. I know that you're usually the one that updates them, especially if it says something as simple as a new review and approval date. When you grab that policy and add the new approved by the board on such and such a date, you wouldn't say for a five-year period, would you? You would just have the new review and approval date?
Correct.
Okay.
I don't care. I just said, if you want to be consistent, you have to go back and do all of the policies that we did in. I don't, because I don't think anyone ever followed exactly what Central does. Not to, not to my knowledge. When you were Secretary Jill, did you look at what Central had in their minutes when you put things on?
I, I, I've been doing the policy updates and the, I have looked at Central numerous times to see what they document on the policy itself, okay? And so on the policy itself, it just says reviewed, approved. And on ours, we've had various different wordings, but it comes down to the fact that it was re-approved on such and such a date. Okay, but it's never re-approved for a certain length of time. That, that's, so the minutes aren't consistent with what we're putting on the policy when we re-date it.
I understand everything you're saying. My question is, when you were secretary, and this was a long time ago, did you go to the central minutes and word it exactly like they do there? So I want to know how far back this goes. I was gonna.
Can I make, can I make a point that might? Okay. What about this, folks? Whatever was done in the past, I think Jill's comment is appropriate. And therefore, why don't we make, accept these minutes as written, make a new motion for this meeting to say that all past approvals of resolutions or policies should be modified, that they were approved as of the date that the resolution was passed, and leave it that way. And, and, and delete and further say and delete any other reference to how long the the term of this policy is to stay in effect.
Well, I don't think we even need a motion to do that. I think that Agnes, who's going to be the new secretary, could just write it that way.
All right, so, so yes, we will need a motion because we have minutes and minutes that are in draft that say something. So we need to change the two for material selection and procurement and take off the next five years and put a period at, Rizzuto made a motion to keep the policy as written. And the same thing for procurement.
I'm getting confused now. So you want me to change this to?
Just taking off the next, for the next five years. For both those motions, we'll take off for the next five years.
Okay, policy is written, and so you just take out that for the next five years. Okay.
So both motions would have to be rescinded to take that off.
No.
Well, the, okay, you're right, Pat.
That's the way the motion was passed. So it had, you know, what you're approving here, is that, is that what we said at the last meeting?
No, no, it isn't. I didn't do it word for word. I just wrote that. So that, you know, because I knew it was a five-year period. So, but I don't think we have to make any motions. That's because this is a drift. Remember, I looked up online with Robert's Rules of Order and said that if it's a draft, you don't have to make a motion changing it.
Fine, fine.
So as you're saying, you're gonna strike those words.
Crawford is saying.
Yes. I'll strike words, and in the future, secretaries will do it the same way that, you know, the wording that Jill suggested. I just didn't want to have to go back like for years and change it.
Okay, so, so we're all, we all agree for the, for the draft to be changed to take off for the next five years. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so now, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as corrected.
I so moved.
Because it's a drift, I thought.
Pat, okay, fine. The minutes, but Pat, it's written in front of us, so it is being corrected. Those, those two items are being corrected. Jill, you made the motion?
I make the motion to approve the draft with the proposed corrections.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Oh.
Who's the second?
Second by Agnes. Is there any further discussion?
Hopefully not.
Hearing none. All in, roll call, please.
All right, wait a second. All right. Be in a sec.
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Byrne?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Rizzuto?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Period for public expression. Well, we're not live streaming, so no one can publicly jump on board. So we'll go to the financial reports.
Okay. Let's pull those up for you, Dick.
I really haven't had a chance to look at them, but basically what Bridgette said is that they're just bank statements and how much money have we, where do our balances stand now? I'm having a hard time reading what's on the screen.
It's okay, let me make it a little bigger. All right, so there's four parts to the financial report as usual. This is the first part. So this is the operating funds that we get from the Central Library through the county. Since this is the, through the end of this year, through the end of 2021, the adopted budget for us, we were expected to make $1,596 in fines, loss books, et cetera. Year-to-date, we accrued $3,393. So we're actually over what was expected of us by 1,797. We were expected to accrue 1,145 in print costs. We accrued 1,703, so we were over by 558. Other income, that's usually USB drives, library cards, any other miscellaneous things that we sell over the desk. We were expected to accrue $66. We accrued 62. We were under by four, but overall, given the year that we had, I'm really happy with these numbers because this, this'll, we've been able to pay off our return to system for last year. With these numbers, we'll be able to pay off our return to system this year. So, so any questions on this part?
Oh, looks good.
Okay, second part. This is the actual county funds bank account statement. So this is everything that came in, went out. These are all, all the deposits from the fines and the printing that we just accrued that I just went over. These are the expenses that went out in November and December. And our current bank balance as of the 31st is $4,408.12. The rest of this is just a reiteration of the previous spreadsheet that I just went through.
Okay, thank you.
Right, next part.
Oh, I just have a point. What, what is the negative 558?
Well, remember I said we accrued more than they, than they were expecting of us? So, so the amount to be realized, we're over it. So that's why it's negative. If it was a positive number, that would mean that I would have to have made more. But this, this reflects directly on the previous spreadsheet that I just went through.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
So it's really not a, it's really not a negative, it's a positive.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what, that's what was confusing about it.
Yeah. Next is our, our private account, which is local funds. So this is all donations, revenue from, from discarded book sales, et cetera. Our current, our current, my gosh, how much we have in the account right now as of December 31st? Here's the deposits we had for November, December. And our disbursements. We had a lot of programming going on in November, December. Majority of these funds came out of the, the different tower donations that we get every year. Let me make this a little bit. Yeah, and we've, we've had the New York's, the New York's Library Construction projects going on as well. So funds, but like the big ones like this one, that, that came out of the, out of the grant funding. And that's, that's noted right here.
And, and the big difference between 10:31 and 11:30 was also pretty much grant money too, right?
Correct, yep. The money market account is on this report as well. Currently, as of January 4th, we're at $131,454.24, which I know you're gonna be talking about this later, Dick.
Yeah.
Byrne, so, interest, we received $6.48, woo-hoo. Hence why Dacre is gonna be talking about this later. Any questions on this report? I have one more piece to this, to this financial report. Okay. All right, lastly is the, the town line. So this is the budget that I get straight through the town of Grand Island. This is just the overall expenses, what, what was spent throughout, throughout the year based on this. And let me move my Zoom window over so I can see what I'm looking at here. So I got, I got the majority of it down. I got it as close to zero as I could. As Dick Crawford had mentioned earlier in the year, I, I, there was a surplus left over because of everything that happened in 2020. So I was able to use that to get some more building improvements done. We got the parking lot light poles replaced. There was a match for that New York State Construction Grant. Part of it came from the town, so that's what this, this refers to. So the, the town money was, that was the match for that grant. See. The other big number we had was for maintenance of the building. Originally, they gave us this amount, the $23,000. So just between just incidentals, things that broke during the year, anything that Harold needed, we had, we got, we got the clocks fixed with it, so the, the clock tower actually shows the correct time when you're driving down Bedell. You're welcome. So I got it down to $405.49. There were a couple extra bills from 2021 that came through. I've sent those vouchers to audit to reflect off, off of this budget, so that, since they're dated 2021, they'll come out of this, of this budget. Any other questions on this?
Thank you.
Okay. No other questions. That's the end of the financial portion.
Go to the next item, the claims.
Okay, I think I have seven to go through. And then Jill, if you could print these off, sign them and send them to me at some point, that'd be great.
Yeah, I printed them. I'm signing them as we're reviewing them, and then I'm gonna drop them off at the library tomorrow, if that's okay.
Yep, sounds good. Thank you. Okay, so let's see. I'll just stay on each one for like a minute or so and then just yell out if you see anything that's, that's weird or that you have a question on. Chris, just so you know, or Christian, I'm sorry, just, just so you know what's up. So those two accounts that I went through, the county account and the private local account. If it says Northwest, that's the private local account. There's gonna be some that have an M, M and T. That's money that came out of the county account.
Okay. Now, Bridgette, I thought that the audit was done by, by Dick Crawford.
Correct. That's, that's, that's reflected in those dates right there.
Right, and so Jill is signing to make a counter-signature, is that it?
Correct, because this, this is us going through it in a, in a public forum during the meeting. And then Jill, Jill will sign off showing that, that it was gone through at, during the meeting.
Okay. So showing it on a screen is sufficient to go through it, right?
Yes, because this, this, this is gonna be part, part of the recording that goes online.
Okay.
We're almost done. And that was the last one.
Great. Correspondence.
I just said one piece of correspondence.
Excuse me, do you have to file those for audit or not, Dick?
You mean, you, you, do we do a motion on that? Is that what you're asking?
Oh, he's right.
Yeah, I just think you need a motion to file, file for audit, right? That's the terminology.
I will entertain a motion to file the claims audit.
What, the, the, the financial report and, and, and the claims for audit? Make it, make it both items.
So I entertain a motion.
In the past?
What?
Have we ever done that in the past?
Yes, we have.
Okay, I am a little fuzzy today. I'm sorry, the brain has.
That's okay.
I'll entertain a motion.
Are we gonna do both together?
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion. I will entertain a motion to file the financial report and the claims audit abstract. Will somebody move that?
I so move, Jill.
Moved by Jill.
I'll second it.
Second by Agnes. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Okay, be in a sec.
Aye.
Becker? Becker?
Aye.
Okay, I didn't hear.
This goes on for an hour and a half.
Byrne?
Aye.
So, okay. Crawford?
Aye.
Rizzuto?
Aye.
All right.
Bridgette, correspondence.
I have two quick pieces. First, Jen Baney says Merry Christmas. Second, on January 4th, we did receive a donation from the Tower Foundation. They, they gave us another five grand to use towards programming for this year. So yay. Yep.
That used to be ten.
That was before me, I don't know. I have, I have a theory as to that, but we can talk about that later. So as in previous years, as uses for the funds are determined, spending proposals will be presented at board meetings for approval. Report of uses will be sent to the Tower Foundation representatives at the end of each year.
Great.
That's all I have for correspondence, unless anybody else had anything.
All right, on to the director's report.
Okay. All right, staff updates. Larry Schultz is our newest senior page. He began work on December 6th, so if you come in, and he usually works with me on Monday and Thursday, so if you come in those nights, say hi. Lucas Duck has stepped down from his senior page position as of December 7th. I'll start working on filling that, that position in the next few months. Because right now, I'm trying to replace our full-time caretaker, because as we know, Harold has retired. That posting went, went live on Monday, and I think the closing date on it is the 20th. So once I hear more, I'll reach out to the board and see who wants to sit in with me for the next step, setting up interviews and such, so.
I'll volunteer right now.
Okay, cool. Okay. The January to April 2022 event calendar. Get that. So you can see what programs we have coming up. Basically, Carly and I sat down and, oh, I didn't change this, but I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I have to scratch these dates off. Carl and I sat down and determined we're gonna hold off on doing story time and toddler time until March. Only because with COVID and everything, children five and under, they, they still aren't eligible to get, to get vaccinated. So basically, just, just, just out of, out of caution, we're gonna hold off for a bit until spring. So otherwise, everything else is still gonna run. We're still doing, you know, as everywhere else, mask required, hand sanitizer, so, so social distancing. We've been limiting attendance as well, so we, so we can spread out people more, so.
Good.
Yeah, that botanical gardens one, it's actually a hybrid class. So there's gonna be a virtual instructor, and then there's gonna be me running around throwing plants at people and helping them put together a little garden, so you're welcome. And the Central Library has started offering computer classes again in person. So I booked four of them February through April, so we'll, we'll see how those end up going, if they're well attended or not. Because I'm gonna try afternoons, because our evenings really never got anything, so I'm gonna see, see how this timeframe works instead. So, otherwise, February, that's, this is during February break, so we tried to get as much programming in during, during the day, during the week, because there's usually a lot of grandparents with, with their grandkids looking for something to do. And we're gonna try to do the same thing in April. We'll just look around and see, see what else that, that we can find to entertain the families on the island.
Bridgette, what's the Diamonds in the Rough program?
So Diamonds in the Rough is, is a nonprofit organization that, that helps get dogs and cats adopted. Our clerk Nancy Visi, she's, she's very active with this group. And, and I, I've told her in the past, I'm like, if they want to do an adoption event, I'm open for that. Because the biggest things that draw people in the library are animals and food. So, so I've been, yeah. Animals and a guy named Sale who cooks. So, so I'm currently working with the coordinator for them, but she, she said she wanted to get back to me until about February, so this is still to be determined. So we'll see. Okay. I haven't talked to Joe Mentor yet about Easter, because it's January, but I, you know, in the past few years, we've done stuff with them in, in collaboration, so we'll see what happens. Freezer, so. Any other questions on this part?
Oh, looks good.
I'm sorry.
Looks very good, Bridgette, very good.
Thanks.
I have a question about the computer classes.
Yes.
In the past, they've done them several different ways. Some of them were one-on-one appointments and others were groups.
Yes, so the ones I booked, they're all groups. They're changing around how, the other ones you're talking to, talking about are Book a Tech Trainer. They're restructuring that. I'm gonna try these first to see if I get a good response, because before, when they did book a tech trainer, it was like a three-hour slot of time, and then you had to have three people booked back-to-back or else they wouldn't come. They've extended it to five hours, so now you have to have five people there in, in order for them to come. So I'd rather push this first to let, to let the, the community know that this is an offering. And then I'll, I'll try it again the next session, probably in the summer, so.
Okay.
And I will let you know, because I know that, that you'll go and take advantage of it. So.
Sometimes, yes, sometimes, no.
Well, Sean, Sean's still there, so if, if, if we have Sean, I know you'll come.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do they offer any classes on Zoom? Because, you know, from the book club, I know that there's several people who don't know how to use it, that maybe that would be something that we could use.
Yes, yes, and they, they've revamped their, their entire catalog of offerings. Zoom is one of those, and I did book a Zoom class.
Okay.
There will, there will be one coming. I'm just waiting for them to create the flyer, so I can start advertising it. But I think I booked that one for sometime in March.
Okay.
Okay. The library system is now starting to offer something called wireless printing. So we tend to have patrons come in, they need to print something off their email, they can show it to me on the phone. They don't know their password to get in their email. So this is a new open source software that they're start, they're starting to try out in the system. It's very clunky, it's not intuitive, there's a ton of steps to it. I've had all the staff that work the desk get trained on it. We've had two successful interactions with this thing so far, so if it's something that you feel you need, bear with us, we'll get it eventually. But that is a service that, that the library is offering now.
Will, will the library possibly pick up faxing?
I don't know the answer to that.
Because there's, there's really no place on the island. Because there's, there's really no place on the island now that does faxing.
Yeah, I know.
It is true. The Fehims just stopped doing that as of December.
Yeah.
Right.
So. Yeah, the, the, the dispatch stopped it too.
It could be a nuisance. Maybe that's why they stopped it. But the thing, it would be an attraction for our patrons. So.
So, so to that, when, when I used to work at Concord, there, there is a fax 24/7 service that's offered for free to libraries. I used it out at Concord. It was awful.
Okay, all right.
So unless, and, and Central still uses it, there's a few branches that still use it. I never had success with it personally. So unless there's another alternative that's not going to cost us mucho bucks, then I, I would, I would look, I would look into it. I have yet to find anything. Okay. Now that, now that Tech Lab is starting to, you know, to hop again, I, I can approach them and see if they know of anything. So.
Just, just throwing it up, that's all.
Yep.
So my, my question would be, people that are trying to do that, can't they scan, scan an email?
That is, that is the alternative. And that's, that's usually what we end up doing.
Yeah.
You know, it's funny that you should say that though. At this point, I'm trying to straighten out social security for John. And he sat on the phone for, I don't know, more than an hour today trying to get the local office downtown. And the only other option is fax. They don't give you an email. They don't suggest US mail. They just say either call, sit on the line, or fax. And so, yeah, we've just been struggling with it. Because we got rid of all of our printers that used to fax from home. So, oh, well.
All right, Library of Things. So back when I got here in 2018, we, we used Tower money to purchase a bunch of Makerspace tech. Pamela and I had tried to do Makerspace for, for about six, six to eight months and it never took off. So basically I'm revisiting all the tech that we purchased and I'm going to attempt to make STEM kits that, that can get checked out over the desk. I was hoping to get this done before this meeting, but unfortunately all kinds of other stuff started happening. So I'll, I'll start putting more effort into this once, once I get back. But I was going to start with a couple Lego kits, snap circuits and little bits. There's a bunch of other stuff that we have too, but unfortunately it, it can only be used if there's an iPad with it. And I'm really wary about lending out iPads at this point. So I figured I'd start here, see if this takes off and then work on the next. You know, after, after I get this, you know, beta test going. So.
Hey Bridget, speaking of the Library of Things, there was a notice that came out from Central today about all the board games that they have.
Yep.
And so it says, you know, you can request them, they'll send it to your local library and then you can check out the board games.
Yep.
So does have, are, are people aware of it? Or is it just so new that nobody has tried it yet?
So this is something that's actually been out for over four years. It was, it was available to the branches because I, I used, used to take advantage of this when I was at Concord and we'd have gaming Fridays with, with all the kids and stuff. No, we never used it over here because Pamela was going in a different direction at, at the time. But, but everything that she came up with was really popular anyway. Since, I guess, usage amongst the branches had dropped. So Dan Caulfield Downtown finally decided to make it public to let, to let the patrons go and take it. So he had to go and change everything around, put new packaging on everything. And he's got a lot of stuff. There's like 200 games down there at, at, at least. So this, this was a huge, a huge undertaking. I think the press release just came out today.
Yeah.
So no, so no, I mean, everybody should know about it now because it, it should show up in the papers, you know, like tomorrow. So.
Okay. And because he has such a big selection, we don't need to actually purchase any and have them.
No, no, we don't.
On Grand Island.
Oh, no, we're good. Yeah, no, he, he's, I've, I've seen the room. He's got a lot of stuff down there. So, you know. Yeah. I mean, there, there's no point duplicating services. He's got a really good setup going. So, yeah.
Did anyone see there was an article in the Buffalo News that even, you know, the people who put the little libraries in front of their house to take books and everything, they have switched that they also include things also. And people put sporting things, like sporting equipment there for people to borrow.
Another alternative. So. Okay, so building improvements, I'm just updates on the 2021 projects. As I stated before, the clocks, the clocks have all been updated in the building. The tower has, has been updated. There's a new master clock. So all of that should sync now. Their problem's fixed. Funding source for that came out of the town maintenance line. Our restrooms, I've, I've updated the baby changing stations because I had, I had to go in there when Harold was off and I'm like, oh no. So, so those, those got updated and I used county operating funds for that. Um. I'm almost done with that grant. Oh, it's down further. Anyway, um, project goals for this year. And this is just what I've seen so far. Obviously there'll be more stuff coming as, you know, we get a caretaker, they, they get used to the building, they start putting in their own input. I want to get a new phone system this year. Our phone system is current, or it's, it's original to the building. And it's time. So I want to start working on quotes in the next like month or two. And then just to get a feel for how much that would cost and then try to figure out funding options for that. Um, I also wanted to update the public restroom partitions because the ones that we currently have, once again, original to the building, they're starting to get rested. It's just time. So I'll, I'll start working on that in the next month or so as well. Construction grants for the current one, that's all the sidewalks and the parking lot light poles. These projects are done as of last week. So when, when I get back, I'll start working on getting everything paid and then closing out this grant and then this grant is done. And I can breathe. So that'll be good. Um, let's see.
We got a lot done, Bridget.
Oh, my gosh. I've been doing nothing but building projects for you people for four years. One week from now, on the 20th, I'll have been here for four years, just so you know. We got a lot.
Amazing.
It's amazing.
Four years. And I have a whole list of everything I've done and it's three pages long. So I hope you're glad you hired me.
Yes, we are.
Yes, we are.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so next part, I, I wanted to have a short discussion about online banking and credit cards. I brought this up with Dick Earn a couple, couple of months ago when he came in. Um, basically, I have, I have to, I'm doing everything on paper. I have to wait for statements to come in. There's a lot of, uh, and anytime we do ordering for programs and such, I have to go through the business office, which is fine. However, I, with supply shortages and the email that we just received from the business office last week, they're asking us if we could try to order things ourselves. One, the orders will go in faster because we'd be doing it ourselves, whereas the business office is dealing with 37 branches of ordering. And by the time they get to some of these orders, the supply is gone. So they're, they're asking us if we could just jump in and take some, some of the load off of them. Second.
That is very interesting. That, that's 180 from the way it, it came to. So.
And the, the second part to that though, I'm also only working with checks. And as Dick Earn knows, the last two years, when I was getting bikes for the bike raffle and trying to buy, buy them with checks over at Walmart, most vendors don't take checks anymore. In order for me to get, to get that tent, I had to do a lot of fast talking last year to get it. I had to send them a picture of the check to prove that I was going to pay for it. So I need to talk to you guys about getting a credit card at some point. Just, just to make business easier, easier to, you know, just, just to do things, you know, for us. The, the online banking, I don't see that being a too, too much of a hassle. I, I would just have to go and just see about setting it up online. Just so I can get the statements on time, so I can get these, these financial reports all set and ready for these meetings. So, any thoughts?
Well, I, on the online bank or the credit card, we, we use some credit cards with the town now. And it basically goes through the, the same kind of an audit kind of a thing as you use the card. You know, you fill a form out and, and everything is tracked. So, I mean, I, I would agree that to get with the times, we probably should be looking at getting something like that done along with the square or something, some credit card system.
So I'm, I'm going to redact the square part of this only because I talked to, I talked to Dick Earn about it. And he actually approached Ken Stone and Ken Stone said.
Kind of, it's a costly process to do, especially when you're going to base, basically be using it for book sales and things like that. The amount of money that you pay out, it, it doesn't compensate for the the, 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 the one or two times that you're going to be using it. I like what you said though, Dick, about the credit card. If we do it the same way that we write checks. So I would come in and just not, just sign the approval for it. You would sign it and then Bridget would go out or whoever would go out and, and buy the item that was authorized. If, if it has that check, kind of check and balance, I don't think we're going against the, the audit procedure that is required of us. Would you agree with it?
I would say if, if, if I could just get a rundown of how the town does it, I'm perfectly fine mirroring that for us. And it, it would just be an extension to the current claims audit policy.
Yeah, it's, it, it's very similar to what we do. And especially in today's world with buying things off of, off the internet, Amazon, Prime, you know, all that, all that good stuff. It makes it a heck of a lot easier.
Yeah.
So is the credit card in, in Bridget's name or is it in library?
Library's name.
Library's name.
Under her, under her supervision and direction though.
Yeah. And then basically it would probably be like the checking accounts, there would be signatories attached to it.
Oh, okay. All right.
Because I imagine I, I would get the credit card through, through the bank. So.
It's an idea. Did you ever think about setting up a Venmo? When you can have the QR code that the customer could scan while they're there and you can have it connected right to the library's bank account?
See, I, I, Central's been really close to the chest about having credit cards at, or I'm sorry, yeah, credit card machines at, at the different branches. They, they want us to use e-commerce off, off of the website and then everything runs through the, the business office down there. If, if we did that, we would be the first branch in the system to ever do that successfully. No other branch in the system has, has been able to do separate credit card purchases on, straight into their own accounts. So I would need to know a lot about that before I, before I approached it. Because Ken Stone, who I mentioned earlier, he's the CFO for the system. So I'd have to have a long talk with him first and get, get him to, to agree to us doing that.
Essentially, it's, it's like a, accepting an electronic check. So it's just cash that goes directly right into your bank account. There's no credit card fees. There's no credit card even applied for. It's just money.
Bridget, maybe, maybe approach him of us being a beta site. To test it out.
Okay.
You just have to make sure that it complies with the audit, audit concept too.
We would definitely have to review and add to the, the current claims audit procedure for this. So, so basically at this point, um, what, what would the next steps be as far as moving ahead to get, to get a credit card for us?
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind seeing us going ahead and getting a credit card. As long as the, the procedure is modified beforehand to comply with that.
I mean, I don't, I don't see this being something that would happen tomorrow, but I, I would like to see about getting, getting this set and ready so that it, it can be approved. And the, the, the procedure and the policy updated for, for vote at the March meeting.
Yeah, I, I would say do it in a transitional stage. That would, the, the credit card would be the first stage. And then we could look into other alternatives. Let's, let's try this out for a few months. And if it's working, then let's proceed, proceed and, and, and see if we want to do the, the automatic out-of-the-bank account if Ken would have agreed to it.
Well, you know what? Maybe what you could consider is, you know, we have an account at M&amp;T and they've got an office right here on Grand Island. So if you approach them about doing online banking and get a credit card through M&amp;T. And that way you could go into the account and, you know, look at the, the statement electronically. You could look at what the credit card, because somebody's got to watch the credit card. You don't want to make, you want to make sure nobody's bought anything, you know, unauthorized.
So, so here goes the thing. We have two accounts at two different banks. So what, what, what I would propose is being able to do online banking for both, but with the credit card for, for the private local account. Because that's, that's where most of the programming expenses come out of. Basically the operating stuff, that's just water bill, mileage, any, and any like improvements to the building that, that would be made through the business office. So the business office would do the, the original purchase and then I would reimburse them. So I, I wouldn't suggest getting a credit card for, for the operating account. I can still work with checks through that because it's very limited stuff that comes out of there. I would suggest getting a credit card for private local.
All right, sounds good.
So that would be the Northwest one, Bridget?
Correct. Yep.
Okay. Is there a Northwest office local?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Where the old Marine was.
Oh, okay. Yeah, they changed names so many times. I can't remember who they are now. Okay.
I hear you.
Yeah, you're going way back, Dick, saying Marine.
Yeah. Okay.
So just so I'm not in there doing this by myself, Mr. Earn as treasurer, would you be willing to help me with this?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
My pleasure.
All right. When, when I get back and I find my desk under all the paper that I'm sure is going to be sitting on it, then I will be in contact. All right. I think that was the last of my director's report.
Okay, unfinished business, the investment policy?
All right, there's two things on this. Uh, Dr. Graham is dragging, seems to be dragging his feet, but he's extremely busy because of the COVID situation. He told me he was going to bring it up in front of the board, but I don't think he's brought it up yet. Uh, he said he can't do anything until it's brought up in front of the board. He also gave it to the, his deputy in charge of finance. I, I, I talked to him, but I don't really like to irritate him. I, I think I'll come back again next week and just ask him, you know, where, where we stand with it. Ken Stone said, you know, that it's really not that profitable. I, I presently am in a government bond fund that pays about 4%. And if we put $100,000 into that, that's going to generate a lot more than $6, $20,000 a year. And, but I don't know if, if that, I'm going to go by my broker and see if it would prove. And I'll also go to the department that's in charge of libraries for the state. See if that would qualify for one of the investments because as Ken says, they're very, very restrictive. I don't want to give up. We brought it up as an item at the ACT meeting. And I wanted to, the trouble is people sit there and they don't, they don't open up and talk and experience it. So I may be sending around an email to other, to the directors and along with the presidents of the boards to see if anybody is, is doing it. I can't see why we shouldn't. But as I said, you know, a lot of restrictions on it and that's why it's going so slowly. That's about it.
All right.
I also wanted to bring up, you don't seem to have anything in the thing. Can I, can I just stick two cents in about ACT?
Oh, yeah. Don't even think about it.
Uh, let's do it under new business.
All right, boss. No problem.
So we'll go to new business. You just did the online banking card discussion. So we'll buy that.
Yeah, thank you.
Selection of officers. So I think we came up with a slate at the November meeting, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Did we?
Yes, we did. It was in.
We gave all the positions to you, Dick.
Because you weren't there.
So I'm continuing as president. Jill is continuing as first or, or vice president. Agnes, secretary. Dick, U.S. Treasurer. And Pat is the member-at-large. Any, any further discussion or thoughts?
I moved, cast one vote in honor of the slate, for the slate.
Okay, there we go.
So I could hear it.
Pat, the, the motion that was made by trustee Earn was the secretary cast one vote for the slate of officers for 2022. Is there a second?
A second then.
Seconded by Agnes. Any further discussion? Roll call?
It's me. Yes. I.
All right, so, um, Agnes, second?
Hi.
That was one one vote by the secretary, right?
You have to approve.
Yeah, but we have to, we have to pass a motion to do that.
Oh, the motion. Okay, I get it. So.
The motion was.
I'm sorry, I have COVID brain today. So Dick earned made a motion for the the secretary kiss one vote. Agnes seconded.
Right.
Now we have to have a vote on that. All right, so let's go to I always like to do in the right order, so. All right. Agnes, sec.
Hi.
Becker.
Hi.
Earn.
Hi.
Crawford.
I.
Rizzuto, I. All right.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
The annual or the approval of the county library personnel policy manual for 2022?
Um, when I sent the the original email a week ago, I I included what changes were made for this year. Um, I I'll just reiterate them real quick because there was only three changes. I contacted Aaron Vest, who's the administrative assistant for Janine Doyle. She said the handbook was updated in January 2021 to reflect changes made since its last printing in 2017. So all those changes, the board has already been appraised of and when you guys approved it last year or the year before and all that. The ones for 2021, there were three updates to the manual this year. Chapter three, section one, union membership, updated to reflect changes in Taylor Law regarding deductions for union dues. Chapter or chapter seven, chapter two, I'm sorry, chapter seven, section two, sick leave, updated to clarify that medical records substantiated sick leave should be submitted to HR. And then last, chapter eight, section two, sexual harassment prevention policy, updated a title and the address of the Buffalo DHR. And then she says, I hope that helps.
Okay.
There was really only one policy, right, that really was changed, which was the last one.
Yeah.
Do we still, do we still have to approve the handbook?
Yeah, we are. We're supposed to every year via resolution.
Okay. Then the secretary signs it.
Yes, let me get down to that. That was in my packet to you guys.
I have it.
Okay.
I sent you a question because it looked like it said all changes from before January 1st of 2021. And I thought it's supposed to be after.
I'm sorry, I didn't see your email, Jill.
Oh.
Yeah, I saw that.
Okay.
I guess if you get the resolution up, I can find it again because it it looked like that it was it should have been after rather than before.
Okay, yeah, I I have it up on the screen right now. Can you see it?
Yeah, it's the one with the whereas is in it.
Okay.
Okay, there it is. Let's see, it's down here somewhere. Shoot. Here, well, let's see here. It says, the first resolved, the Grand Island Library reaffirms the adoption of the manual and handbook and adopts amendments made since January 13, 2022. Well, that would be going forward.
I put I put the wrong date on it and so it it should have been.
Twenty-one?
Well, the the date that we last approved it, which was January, no wait, January 7th, 2021. I just put the wrong date there.
Okay, there we go.
Yeah, so that date goes there.
Yes.
Sorry, I thought I caught them all. Apparently I missed one to change that. Do we want to hold off until the next meeting so I can up update it and present it again?
Well, the only thing we're changing is the date. That's kind of just a small ministerial act. Why don't we, why don't we approve it and then get a new document out and get it to Pat so that she can sign it and get it back. Does everybody agree with that?
Yes, it was just an oversight.
Okay, yeah, I will do that. I'll add that to my to-do list.
So I'll entertain a motion then to approve the personal policy manual as distributed to us by the county.
Hey, I'll make the motion.
Moved by Rizzuto. Is there a second?
Right, who's seconding?
Whoever.
Seconded by Earn. Discussion.
Yeah, I, um, the the other provision, other whereas, it says on January 13th, they said it is reviewed, the changes made by the human resources to the policy since January 7th. Okay, that's fine. Now, where, come on, think. The you you said from the county, this you mean the.
You mean the system, the system.
The system, okay. And that was the only thing that I was concerned about. The language that it's as submitted by the.
Buffalo Erie County Public Library.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Roll call?
Agnes, sec.
Hi.
Becker.
Hi.
Earn.
Hi.
Crawford.
I. Motion passes. Thank you. Bridget, the annual update document for 60-day extension?
Okay, the reason for this every year, this is this is for the comptroller's report that we have to submit to the state every year. The the library system downtown central business office, they compile all of the numbers that we need to submit into that comptroller's report. They never get it before the February due date. So every year we always ask for that 660-day extension. So here's the draft of the letter. Basically, it's the same one I've been sending every year just with new dates. Dick or in his treasurer usually signs off on it.
Bridget, does it need to have a due date in it like, you know, the report is due February, whatever, and we're requesting?
No, this verbiage comes straight from Tracy Policki in the business office. This is the form letter that she sends out every year.
Okay.
Do we need to pass this by a vote or just part of business?
I don't think so. We usually don't every year because I have I have to do it anyway. So I just need Dick to either come in and sign it and I'll send it or if you can print it out and sign it and drop it off, that'd be great. Or if you want to mail it yourself, that's fine.
Super. All right, conflict of interest disclosure for 2022?
Okay, so I've got the disclosure statements on here. This is the same as every year. All the trustees are required to sign this. Directors required to sign this, basically just stating that we don't have any complex of interest in our roles with with the Grand Island Library. So the pages are here for you guys. You want to print out, sign and drop them off to me at at your leisure, then I can get the file ready for this year.
Wonderful. And program for funding requests?
Okay, back up here real quick. Okay, I have two funding proposals. Funding source for both of them is coming out of 2020 Tower because I still have around $1,600 in there. For adult programming so far, I'm asking for a $500 budget request that'll pay for the Botanical Gardens at the end of this month. And I've got local author Rick Falkowski coming next month. The difference in the 255 plus 75 and 500, I would just use it to get an an extra program before the next meeting in March. The second funding proposal is Carly's request for for yeah, for $500. That'll include the following two items. Remainder would be used for unforeseen youth services program expenditures before the March board meeting. She's booked exploring more to come and do and and really involved mini golf program in April. It looks really cool. And then for storytime, itty bitty and outreach supplies, itty bitties are toddler time. So basically she'd she'd start doing the purchases in February so they'd go for the March and April session that that we're going to have. So a total request is $1,000 for for upcoming programming.
Are you looking for a resolution for that right now?
Just just an approval.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion as described here for the program funding proposals for the adult at 500, the youth at 500.
Use it, yeah.
I move.
Also move.
Move by Earn. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Rizzuto. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Okay. Agnes, sec.
Hi.
Becker.
Hi.
Earn.
Hi.
Crawford.
I.
Rizzuto, I.
Motion passes. Thank you. We'll we'll add one item under new business and that'll be ACT. Report, Dick?
Yeah, we had a very interesting, but I I hope everybody found to be an interesting meeting last Saturday by Zoom. I the system staff was extremely helpful in in getting this to to work. We've gotten a lot of the kinks out as far as taking attendance by having people register with the name of the library. The one thing that is our our treasurer, Bob Adler from Concord, he's a history buff and he has something near and dear to his heart, but unfortunately, you know, he spent time on this and everything and people, as I said, just kind of sat and didn't comment. So he wants to further pursue this, to find out different ways in which libraries can get more actively involved in keeping track of their history. And and in recording newspapers, digitizing things, so many of the things that we do and other things, and he'd like to look into this further. And I I'm asking, I'm asking this board because because I'm undecided on it. I think it's a good point, but libraries are under doing a lot of different things right now. How do you all feel about this? Do you think this is something that should be pursued and if so, how?
I think we talked about having materials, materials available to do ancestry. And if we do that, having records available, local records would be most helpful.
And when you say ancestry, it's interesting that you say that because my son is all of a sudden all into this stuff, back generations. And he keeps saying, hitting me with emails, what about this, what about that, which is which has been fantastic. But is that what you're alluding to or are you?
Yes, because you have a lot of local people whose roots are right here in Grand Island.
Yeah.
And you know, I I think it would be helpful.
Okay, and what kind of?
If someone wants to look at our dispatch records that we've digitized, how do they go about doing that? I don't remember.
So there's two ways. One, we do, everything is on microfilm up through 2014. I have physical copies from 2014 to current. It is also available online through New York Historic Newspapers. So usually when I get phone calls like that, asking for that for that information, I'll I'll refer them to the to the website and I'll actually do a a reference with them, have them follow me online so they can, so that they know how to how to navigate it. The other thing we've done is when I got to Grand Island, there was a whole bunch of local history materials in the back of the library. So we created a local history section, which we're constantly adding to. I've also been able to get a full run of the yearbook from from the high school. And actually, I'm glad that that you brought that up because I have to get the one for last year. So so that's currently what we have available. Dispatch did approach me last year about digitizing 2015 to current. And I've asked them, I'm like, make sure you don't already have it digitized because right now when you go online to your website, I can find your stuff on there from the last three years few years because the way that Lynn did it was there was a Winnie Lark grant. There was a whole, it was it was a huge undertaking. And the thing is, if it's something they're already doing, I don't want to use grant funds for this if if they're already, you know, doing this. And then if if they do have it digitized, they can see about adding it to the existing database on on New York Historic Newspapers. So that was a conversation I had with Dispatch last year. I haven't heard from them since. So this might be a conversation I I'd have to open up with them again.
You know, during the ACT meeting, Bob Adler was was talking about how they have a town historian and the town historian has all the records in his office. And so if you wanted to research something, you had to go to his office to actually look at records. So it sounded like it was a single person with an office in their town hall as opposed to Grand Island, which has a historical society. So.
Well, you guys have Jody Robinson.
We have a town historian too.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I didn't even know.
She runs the Isle de Grands website, so she's actually pretty good about that.
Okay.
You have, you have to remember what what Bob said. He said that they do have a town historian, but the person has limited hours and if people wanted to have access to this material, he wanted to see if therefore some of the material or material could be moved over to the library, which is a space, which is a space requirement. So.
I was just trying to understand what our situation was on Grand Island and whether we had a similar situation, a similar need. You know, if we have a town historian, is that the only place where the stuff resides at this point? Is it accessible? So because I don't know the answer to any of that. So I just didn't know whether we had any sort of similar need. And as Bob was explaining what they would like to do in their town, you know, with their library, you know, I just wondered if we even had any parallels.
Yeah, we do. And there certainly could be a a more symbiotic relationship with the town historians material in the Grand Island Library. Some of the stuff is done at River Lee. She has file cabinets of stuff down at the Nike base that she assumed when she took over for Teddy Linefelder. So there's there's a lot of stuff that that Jody, you know, has has access to. And it, you know, it could just start out by having a meeting between Bridget and Jody to figure out what's in the library, what she has and you know, Dick brings up a great point about about storage area and space. That was one of the first things that that Jody needed when she took over because Teddy Linefelder had, you know, decades of stuff from her and her mother doing it. So there is a lot of stuff and and yeah, it might be a very unique project between the town historian, the historical society and the Grand Island Memorial Library.
Downtown has, they offer a lot of guidance on digitization projects. So so that might be something that I could reach out and see if that's something that she might have interest in. It would be a Herculean event. You know, but you know, we don't, you don't know unless unless you start talking, so.
Yeah, if if possible, when you set that up, could you let me know? If possible, I'd like to attend.
Okay, because Mary Cook and Kurt Nest Stark, they're they're really good sources as well because they're both on the board for for River Lee, so.
Bridget, I'll send, well, I'll I'll talk to Jody and then I'll send her, send you her contact information.
Oh, no, I I I know her already. I send her an email once, once a week, so.
That's right.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Anything else on that?
It was it was just, it was Agnes and Jill were there. It was very nice. And I'm sorry you couldn't make it, Richard. I understand, but Bridget was a little under the weather. But we had, our branch was represented as usual and or our library was represented as usual. And I think I I still haven't gotten the final count as to how. And I think, uh, I I still haven't gotten the final count as to how many of the twenty-two were there, but it looked like a good percentage.
Oh, you know what else you might want to mention, Dick, um, in case, um, other people need to know? You know, they sent out an email stay, saying that they're holding webinars on uh, various chapters of the trustee handbook. And they did the first three, they did first, the first three webinars already, and I know I missed them all. And now the next one is coming up January eighteenth, which I signed up for, because it's on, um, finance and budget. And then now I have a conflict, so I don't know that I'm going to be able to do it anyway. Uh, but I did, I did ask whether they could post, because I'm sure they recorded them. Could they post the previous webinar so that, you know, we could get to them and and watch them? And so Janine said, yes, she would check into that, because as far as she knew at this point, they weren't posted anywhere. But, um, that seemed like a very reasonable thing to do, so.
They are going to be posted. They are going to be posted. You know, it's a very, it's a, thank you for bringing that up.
Okay, so that was, that was a good thing to hear about. And those will count towards your education requirement. And central, of course, is, is.
Yeah, they haven't, they haven't determined it yet, but but Janine's pushing for it.
Okay, and same thing with the ACT meetings as well, so.
Right.
All right, anybody else have anything for the good of the group?
You know, actually, I do, and I just want to mention it to Bridgette, and and maybe we'll just make this a conversation for later. But, um, we recently had a friends meeting. And, um, two things I should probably mention, one for the group is we, we keep trying to figure out how to have more value to our friends' memberships and, you know, appreciate what they do. So we decided that we're going to have a basket raffle. And if you show your Friends of the Library membership card, when you come into the library, you get a free raffle ticket. And we're putting together a basket with a gift card to Barnes and Noble, a book, a pillow and a couple of different things. And we're going to run that raffle. We're gonna have the basket displayed prominently with a big sign, thank you, friends, you know, join our free raffle. And, um, we're going to, uh, have that on display in the library and draw the winner, winner at the next Friends Library meeting, um, which is March thirty-first. So, um, I hopefully you'll see that and, um, you can use your friends' card as well. Um, the other thing is. Yes?
Excuse me, is that only going to be open to friends members or any patron?
Friends members. And if you don't have a membership, it tells you right on there, pick up your application at the desk. It's five bucks for the year. You can't beat it.
Can't beat it.
Right, so I, um, I drafted up the language and Bridgette did an awesome job making it look fancy and put graphics behind it and stuff. So I'm going into the library tomorrow to, um, set up the basket.
Oh, I have one last thing.
And well, okay, go ahead, because I had one more.
No, no, go ahead, you, you finish and then.
Um, Bridgette had asked whether the friends would consider adopting the volunteer policy. Um, a- and then the main reason for that is, one, it it requires anybody that's volunteering to put emergency contact information on there, but it also involves a signing a release of liability in case anybody gets hurt while they're volunteering. And so, um, you know, the, the friends were sort of daunted by the whole idea, I think. And, you know, me sort of being in between with a trustee and a friend. Um, you know, the friends, the, the volunteer policy is actually a system policy. And Grand Island doesn't have their own. We just, um, are subject to it through the system-wide policy. So I wasn't really sure how this would work and, and if somebody's volunteering at the library for the library, even though they're a friend. And I'm not sure how those things connect. So I wanted to, if nobody else has an interest, um, you know, I want to talk to Bridgette when you get back in the office and kind of put our heads together about, you know, the system-wide policy applying to volunteers, applying to volunteers that happen to be Friends of the Library. Um, the volunteers that the friends draft for the book sale. You know, there's, there's, there's some interplay there and I I wasn't sure how to work through that.
I'm definitely open to that conversation.
Okay, yeah, because you know, I I read, I read through it and I've studied the language a couple of times. I looked in the handbook to see what kind of guidance there was. And it makes really good sense if somebody just comes to you and goes, Bridgette, I'd love to help at the library. Can I work on Tuesdays and shelf books for you? But, you know, when you're drafting people for a book sale via the friends, yeah, I don't know how that works. So, and and how you would even format the policy. So, um, when you get back, let's, um, let's set up a time and chat about it and, um, see if we can get our heads around it.
Yeah, I.
Go ahead, Dick.
Okay, um, I think it's, it's an excellent point, Jill. My concern with that is, um, not as much what policy covers it, but is there adequate insurance to cover somebody getting hurt as a volunteer and doing something for the library or the friends? Um, and I, I guess it definitely should be looked into. And and when you're finished with that point, I just have one more, more thing to tell you about.
I have one tiny thing too when you're done, so go.
Uh, I can go, okay.
Guess so, Jill, Jill, were you done?
Yeah, I'm done, because I I don't think I do, you know, we'll take care of that in a separate meeting.
Yeah, we'll talk.
Okay, well, um, I've discussed this with Bridgette. Um, as you all know, uh, there are several hundred, um, uh, Afghan refugees that are being resettled in Western New York. And there are four basic agencies, um, Journey's End and and three others that are trying to gather, gather kits. They call them, uh, welcome kits. Um, but they're more than what, uh, the welcome wagon does. Uh, that were, the list was put together by the State Department. So, um, this, the woman from Journey's End came and spoke, uh, for example, to the Rotary Club. And we're, we're looking to assemble, um, uh, help, uh, welcome kits, uh, or parts of them that can be then contributed and they can put together the rest of them. Uh, the challenge is finding a place to, to, for people, a common place for, for people to, to bring these things. So, um, I ran it by Bridgette. I don't know if it needs board approval or not.
No.
Uh, Bridgette was in agreement that, uh, since we're down now, we're not really gathering books for a book sale.
Right.
People would be able to, uh, bring these items in. Uh, some of them are cooking utensils. Uh, some of them are, um, sheets and and bedding. Some of them have to be new, some of them can be used. Most of them have, should be new. Um, and, uh, th- this is what, uh, I'm, I'm proposing. Uh, there's going to be an article in the Dispatch, uh, probably tomorrow. And, uh, I just wanted you to be apprised of, of that. I I took. I apologize for this, uh, after talking to Bridgette. I, I put, we put in the article that, uh, it could be a drop-off point, so hopefully you would like that.
No, I I I already told you, you can use this as a drop-off point. You can use this as a storage space, because I have the room right now. You can use the meeting room when you're, when you're as- assembling the kits, it's fine. So, that one's, that one's.
I have a question. The Dispatch, is it going to have a full list of everything that you want?
That's a very good question.
Because I'm in the process of, you know, cleaning, uh, a tray. And I have things I could donate right, I have new sheets that have never been used.
God bless you.
So, um, I want the whole list, so I could, I know what I could give.
I will email it to you.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Um, last thing I had, keep, keep in mind, our long-range plan ends at the end, end of this year. So we're gonna have to work on one for the next few years. Jill, remind me, is, is it four years or or? Or five years?
Yeah, it's five years.
Okay, so we might want to get, uh, like a, a committee together. Me and a few of you to sit down and see what needs to go into this for, for the, by the end of the year.
Yeah, that, you know, that one's gonna really take some thinking, because, uh, previously, our goal, our biggest goal was to increase programs, to get programs, to have programs. And now we're doing an awesome job on that. So, um, we, we really need some new challenges for ourselves to put into the five-year plan. So, um, you know, i- it won't be one of those ones where we go, oh, let's reapprove with no changes. Because, um, we, we, we were definitely in a different position five years ago. So, um, and thanks to Bridgette and all the efforts and all the things she's done, we are, we are definitely a different library now, so.
So does anybody right now want to, uh, put their hand up and say they will be part of a subcommittee? To at least get the ball rolling?
Yeah.
I just want to point out that you're gonna be getting, hopefully, you're gonna be getting a new director. You could be getting the same meat and potatoes that you have now, but you could be getting a lot of, maybe some different thoughts. So let's, uh, get together and discuss it, but let's keep our ears open to see what a new director may be suggesting as his goals and objectives or her goals and objectives.
Right.
Okay, so every, so everybody basically is interested in, in working on that, which is wonderful. Um, what, what we'll do, what I'll do is, why don't I send out a, uh, a meeting request to see if people are available sometime in February before our March meeting, so we can get a little bit of a jump on it. Does that sound reasonable?
Great idea.
And what I'd suggest is, you know, people kind of think of conceptually, you know what I mean? We, we don't have to be worrying about changing number one and number two and all that kind of stuff. What we need are suggestions for concepts, you know, um, sort of type stuff. So to start, read it again and start thinking about it.
All right, sounds good. Anybody have anything else? Okay, hearing nothing, motion to adjourn.
Wait a second, before. When's the next meeting?
Oh.
Next meeting is Thursday, March tenth.
Okay, I didn't have my calendar here, so I wanted to have it.
That's a good question, Pat.
Oh, all right. And one quick question, Bridgette, what's happening with something for Harold's?
Um, so he, my goal with him is, uh, he, he's going to be coming back part-time, starting the twenty-ninth, until a, a new caretaker comes in and he can show him the ropes. Um, I have his wife's phone number. Um, I'll start talking to her after he starts wo- working with us again. Because I, uh, let, let me, let me just get, get him back in, everything caught up. I figure once he's done after that, then we'll talk about, uh, doing something else, so.
Yeah, I, I'm glad you brought it up, Agnes. Um, I, I donated for all of you.
Yes, I was just.
Oh, I forgot, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, so that you don't forget, because I'm, it's easy for me to forget.
Twenty dollars, Dick?
Twenty dollars, when you get a chance. You know.
Take Venmo?
What? No, I don't. And the way it's going, I hear it's not going well, so.
I'm gonna send your twenty dollars to Christian's Venmo account. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Moved by Rizzuto, is there a second?
Second by Banazak.
Second by Banazak, any further discussion? Roll call.
What time is it? Uh, it's, uh.
Five fifty-three.
All right. All right. So. I lost my, oh, here it is.
Um, before, before we all jump off, can I just ask Bridgette, how, how did your surgery go and how are you feeling? Or did I miss that at the very beginning?
Let me text you after, so this isn't recorded, so I'll.